Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
We sit in for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Again, the Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interview for P and Z, Kerry Flandog, Flandon, I'm sure I butchered your name, sorry about that.
Good English. Good grammar, tough English, you know.
Thank you.
Way to do it.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the commission.
Well, my name is Kerry Fladen. I've lived in Sioux City for 15 years. My wife is from here. If you stay married long enough and she wants to go home to mama, then you just nod your head and say yes. So this is where we are and this is where we will be. I believe the city is doing well. We're going places. I would like to be part of that. If it's part of planning and zoning, then that's it. If it's not, then there's many other places that I'm used to the community. I bring a certain amount of experience in residential real estate ownership. I'm a landlord. I buy houses. I fix them up. Some I keep as rentals, some I resell. So I can bring a perspective that is very hands-on.
Okay. Questions? How many openings? We got a couple, right?
I know we do.
Yeah, I'm sure it's two.
New vacancies.
Mm-hmm. Questions?
Thank you for applying.
Where'd you move from?
Originally, I'm from southeast Iowa. Grew up on a farm there. Spent 17 years in Des Moines. I've spent most of my career in banking and lending, actually. The last 12 years, I've been buying houses, fixing them up, and managing rental properties, single-family rentals.
Have you attended any of the P and Z meetings?
I have not. Actually, this is one of these things. They just called me last week and said, hey, by the way, your application from last year is still active. Would you like to come down and talk?
Sure. All right. Well, good. I just wondered if you knew what you're getting into.
Well, the short answer is maybe. The one thing I have learned with every new job and every new position I am into with various boards and community organizations, no matter what you think, you know, yeah, to take two steps in and then toss that out and relearn.
I think you're probably right, Kerry. And I, it's a great group and of course, they provide a lot of, take a lot of their own time to put everything in perspective and get it to the city council and they're a busy group, so.
Well, it's, to me, I think it's a matter of, you know, we have the rules. Rules need to be followed. Sometimes exceptions need to be made because it's reasonable and prudent to do that. And that's why you have the board to do this rather than just somebody saying yes, no, and it's black and white.
I agree. Thanks for your interest.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you're here.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you applying. We'll go to the consent agenda, which is 3 through 13. Deeds today, you consider that all items are passed unless a council member asks for a separate vote. If you want to address an item, please come up as I read the number and state your name and address for the record. If you want to come up and speak on an item not on the agenda, come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, please state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three are the reading of the city council minutes of June 24, 2019. Four is a motion adopting the 2019 to 21 strategic plan. Five is a resolution adopting the second quarter supplement to the municipal code. Six is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Cultural Affairs for participation in the Iowa Great Places Program. Seven, a resolution approving a joint participation agreement with IDOT for a transit assistance grant. Eight is a resolution approving a change order number three and authorizing payment to Bainbridge Construction for the 30th and Pier Street intersection reconstruction project. Nine are resolutions proposing to sell property at 1715 West Highland Avenue. The petitioner is Kwon Vo. Ten are applications or actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the convention center cooling tower project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the airport maintenance garage fuel tank project.
Can I ask a quick question, please? Mike, I just noticed both projects were, the construction, estimated construction costs were not what the balance reflected. And I was wondering, where is the rest of the money coming from?
Fair question. Mike Colet, Assistant City Manager. So in Transit's case, we have a grant for about $200,000. That's not part of this balance. It's on a reimbursement basis. So there's an 80-20 grant that we got from Iowa DOT. On the airport side, we, depending on how the bids come in, we just won't be able to do other projects with capital.
All right.
We're moving forward with this one because of priorities.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
C is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the transit fuel tank project. Eleven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving change order number one and two with Mark Albinicious for the police station parking lot reconstruction project. B is a resolution approving a development agreement with Nelson Commercial Construction Property at 2805 West Fourth Street. C is a resolution approving a change order number eight for infra, track for the Floyd Boulevard sanitary sewer intercepting project. Staff for request and motion to delete this item. Is that still what you would like to do?
Gordon Ferris, City Engineer. Yes, we'd like to.
I'll move to delete number C.
Second. Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Okay, this thing times out in about five minutes, so we'll work on that. D is a resolution authorizing a release of mortgage promissory note and deed restriction for Aberdeen Apartments for property at 1120 Nebraska Street. Any to abstain on that item? E is a resolution awarding a contract to Western Specialty of the Heritage, for the Heritage Parking Ramp Repairs Project. F is a resolution approving a subordination, non-disturbance, and a tournament agreement with Motor Mart and Monarch Federal Historic Preservation. We need a motion to defer that until July 8. I'll move, go ahead.
I'll move it, defer to delay.
Chris here. Can I ask a question real quick, please?
Yes.
In the, it looks like the third paragraph down says the developer has secured an investor who has committed to purchase historic tax credits that are expected to be awarded. When do, when will the awards be made?
Sometime this week or next week. Their applications are all due May 29, and the state has gone down to one round of historic tax credit awards. And that is, we've been told they will be made after July 1, so we expect them this week or next week.
What happens if they don't get their historic tax?
Then that would mean a delay. But we've been told by reliable sources at IEDA that this is one that they consider a priority.
Okay. Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Excuse me. Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain.
Capron?
Aye.
G is a resolution approving a subordination, non-disturbance, and tournament agreement with 413 Pier Street and Monarch Federal Historic Preservation. I can move that one. I don't have a conflict.
Second. To delete?
Well, it says delete on this one.
Yep.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Thirteen receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward right now. Seeing none, we will vote. Passes four to zero. Mr. Waters is absent. Fourteen is an ordinance amending the municipal code to increase sewer rates effective August 1, 2019. Are there going to be an amendment to this, or?
Mayor and council, you'll notice this is an entirely new ordinance, so nothing needs to be amended. What you approved as first reading last week will just fade and be replaced by this entirely new ordinance.
Donna Forker, Finance Director. Mayor and council, the new proposal in front of you is going to do a rate increase of 3% the first year for commercial and residential and a 10% on all other classes. Then we will take the study, cost of service study when we get it, and send that out to all of our sister cities and all of our major industrials. Give them a 60-day period to review the study. Make any public comments back to us. We'll bring those back to you. And then we will go into the second year of rate study and present new rates for the next fiscal year.
So these rates, Donna, will be good until July 1, 2020?
Yes.
Yes. Unless the study comes back and you decide to do mid-year, but my anticipation would be it would be for the full year.
And you're expecting the study when?
It should be here any day. With the holiday, they, they were hoping to get it out this week, but it could be next.
And as Donna mentioned, we'd like to spend a considerable amount of time with not only our sister cities, but our industries, going through the study with them. It's one thing to, we, we have all the faith that the study was done correctly, but I think it needs to be explained in great detail because of the magnitude of the increases and changes.
And we will get an explanation at the same time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Donna.
Anyone to be heard. Public hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
I'll move it.
We don't, we haven't, we didn't move, I thought somebody moved it.
Nope.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, now the public hearing is open. Would anyone like?
It's actually an ordinance, but not a hearing, mayor. So it's good.
Public hearing is now open for the ordinance.
Oh. I didn't do it.
Hearing is now closed. You got it printed. I just read it, so don't.
Well, it was that kind of a day.
Who do we need yet?
Rhonda.
It was just moving too fast, Bob.
Passes four to zero. I think on a rate increase, we ought to make sure Alex gets an opportune vote, so we'll go on to 15, which is a resolution approving a development agreement with HH, with HCC Enterprises and a minimum assessment agreement with HCC Enterprises and Sertino Asset Management for renovations at 4501 Southern Hills Drive deferred from June 10, 2019. A motion is needed to delete this item. I'll move that. Second.
You can vote with your panels if you wish.
So I means to delete, correct?
Yes. In this case, yes.
Will that be coming back?
Yes, it, will it be coming back?
Will it be coming back?
Yes.
Sixteen is a resolution approving advance of funds for repayment from bourbon renewal tax increment, revenue funds deferred from June 10, 2019. A motion is needed to delete. I'll move that. Second. Passes four zero. Citizen Concerns. Anyone to be heard in the audience, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I am 17.
Yes.
Yep.
My name's David Keane. That's K-E-A-N-E. 1106 Fourth Street. And I just wanted to have an opportunity to ask some questions about what has happened with Big Ox. And I, you know, read numerous articles in the paper about the situation, but there was some information that I'm still seeking about this. I'd like to know what happened as far as if there was any vetting that was done of Big Ox prior to the, prior, prior to Sioux City actually doing business with them.
Bob, you're in a better position than Mark than anybody is to answer that than a council member.
As you're aware, Big Ox is located in South Sioux City, Nebraska. Under our agreement, our sister city's agreement, we provide solid way, our sanitary sewer waste to them. They did apply for the appropriate permits to provide waste into our stream, and it was approved by the city.
Okay. And was there any, I'm not sure if a credit check would have been part of any vetting procedure, but is that something that would have been done? Because I'm just wondering about the general background that the city had of this company before doing business with them.
I can't speak to the credit check, but Mark Sims, Uteley's Director, I can say that, I can't remember how many months now, but for a number of months, they did operate successfully and paid their bills on time. And we had no concerns at that point with the waste they were sending us or the, their payment for those.
So how long were they up to date with their payments?
I don't know exactly. Probably a year, a year and a half.
A year or a year and a half that they were current. And when did we start doing business with them?
Again, I don't have it in front of me. I think it was fall of 2016, maybe.
2016, okay. So for that amount of time, they paid their bills up to date and everything. Was the city having problems processing their transmissions? Because I also read in the paper that there was some concern that the equipment at the Sioux City water, wastewater treatment plant was possibly being damaged or had been damaged to some extent.
No problems while they were in compliance.
Okay.
We started to see issues when? Last summer?
Last spring, probably.
Last spring, we started to see issues with what they were providing to our plant.
Okay. And where were they, where were they getting their water that they were using? Because my understanding was that they were using three gallons of water per pound of waste that was being treated. So were they drawing that water from, I don't know, like the Missouri River? Because it's going back into the Missouri River, so.
They're probably purchasing it from Sioux, South Sioux City.
I'm sorry?
Probably purchasing it from South Sioux City.
So they were, they were using clean, fresh, drinkable, potable water, potable water. Is that right?
I would assume so.
Okay. And they had to pay for that water, obviously, to start with. 600,000 gallons a day. Okay. Let's see here. I'd like to know if there was any involvement on the part of any executives of BPI or Tyson, if you'd have any knowledge of this. And I know you may not have known this upfront, if there was a separate company that was set up, and that might not have been investigated. But I'm just wondering if that is something that could be explored while we're in the process of trying to resolve this with a lawsuit or whatever the case would be. Because I'd just like to know, I think that Sioux, that Sioux City needs to know, deserves to know, if there was an arrangement, even though it's a separate corporation, Big Ox, or an LLC or whatever it would be, I'm wondering if there was some help in getting that company started by a Tyson executive or BPI executive? Because they're handling their waste, right? Organs and bones or whatever, and?
I don't think they're handling IBPs, are they?
BPI.
BPI, but not Tyson. Not Tyson.
Tyson's a paunch.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Paunch.
Paunch? What's that mean?
It's just a byproduct of some of their processing.
So they were receiving that, that stuff from Tyson? Is that what you're saying?
Right. And whatever contractual arrangement they had with them was between them.
Okay, so it's just, I'm curious about these things. And I think it, it applies to what our situation is and what we're faced with here. And I'd like to know what Tyson did with this stuff before they gave it to, before they made an arrangement with Big Ox. Do you happen to know that by any chance?
No.
Because I'm, some of this stuff can be used. I don't know if they still use fat for making soap. They used to do that a long time ago, is what I understand. But, so you want to try to use what you can. But I'm just wondering if they, if something, if, it doesn't surprise me, is what I'm getting at here, that something underhanded may have, may have taken place. And this is a shame for Sioux City. I'm not really faulting anyone. I'd just like to know what happened, and we'd want to not have it happen again. Because there's other uses for $3 million or however much it's, it is now. How much is owed to the city by Big Ox? Approximately?
3.1 million.
Okay, 3.1 million, all right. So, you know, that, that money can be used in better ways than losing it like that, like for police department, fire department, or any other city employees or whatever else. So, so. So once there was a, an excessive amount of material that was being transmitted to the Sioux City wastewater treatment plant, what happened after that was discovered?
I would advise staff and council to be cautious in answering too many questions as there may be pending litigation in this matter. And while some of these details will likely come to light at some point.
Okay.
I would, I would recommend that some of these questions not be answered at this time.
Okay. Because, you know, it's. I'm just wondering how long it, it was that way that they didn't pay us and they're possibly, possibly damaging our equipment at who knows what expense that would have been. I don't know. If it's a hundred, a couple hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars, you know, whatever. It's just.
Shame that that went on as long as it did. So anyway, I have just a couple more things, so I really appreciate your time here. Was there an upside for Sioux City to treat their waste? And what was the upside? I'm just curious as far as? We had capacity to sell.
I'm sorry?
We had capacity to sell at that point. We had capacity that we, excess capacity.
That you could sell. I see. I see. So, and that was advantageous to Sioux City to be able to do so. And they, when we had that arrangement with them, we, we weren't, they weren't exceeding, or we weren't, Sioux City wasn't exceeding its ability to treat that then. It was, it was really that, they were transmitting too much too quickly. It's not that, it's not that they, they were.
It was a little more complicated than that, but, but we had capacity at that particular point to sell when they first signed on, and they were in compliance for an awful long time.
Okay. So can you give us the latest info on what the situation is? Probably not legally. You can't do that.
I believe all of the information that we can share has been shared with the media at this point.
And then, let's see.
So have they declared bankruptcy yet?
Not that, I believe the city has been notified.
Okay. And this company was based out of Wisconsin. I'm wondering also if they had any prior track record in business, or was this their first venture into this kind of a business? Do you know that?
I believe they have one other plant somewhere else, but I don't, I can't tell you where that is.
Or how long they, they were in business?
Been operating, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, that's pretty much what I had. I want to thank you very much. My concern was simply that, you know, I hope that these issues are being explored still. And that if there's anybody that's responsible, even if they would actually not be able to be pursued because it was a corporation, it would be nice for us to know, even the individuals who were actually responsible for starting this company, what their background was. And, you know, that other information, I think, is, would be interesting for the public to have, and a good thing for the public to have. Thanks very much.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council concerns. Mr. Gretkin?
I had a couple of issues I shared with the manager that'll, neighborhood concerns, basically. I wanted to share two other things real quickly. Last Thursday night, I went to the bike trail public hearing. Interesting. There were probably, I think there were some notes in the weekly update about it from Matt, but there were probably 30, 35 people there. Schneider Consultants presented information on the proposed plans. They're recommending three lanes of traffic, one north, one south, and a turning lane. They discussed how that would work on the roadway. It's my observation that bikers like it and homeowners don't. And they have some concerns about the bike lanes. They say create traffic hazards. They were asking for traffic data, accident data, to see what that looked like. They talked a great deal about speeding on Hamilton Boulevard. And there were comments like, I think maybe we saw in the paper with respect to the plywood trail, why would we spend money when only 2% of the people ride bikes? They mentioned Country Club Boulevard quite a bit about getting it off Hamilton and going there. And they did say that they, Matt shared with them that he'd be presenting to council, they would like to have either a public hearing or I encourage them to come to council meetings to share their opinions. So I think Matt's going to make a presentation. There was some concern about whether the majority of them could get here because we start at four and they go late. I said I'd throw that on the table if they can have a public hearing later and council can attend and post it and attend and, and listen to all their complaints. It's, I think I had three people over the weekend that stopped me that wanted to share with me that they didn't think that was good to put the bike lanes, you know, on the street, but, or in the street. But it'll, it'll, I think there'll probably be some pretty good discussion. So I'm hoping that it either comes back here and they have an opportunity to hear, and we can go to them if that's what it takes. The other meeting I went to was the, on the jail, the new proposed plan the county's working on, on Woodbury County Jail. And I, the paperwork I received, I, I think I asked Jessica, and she made copies for everybody here. So that's for you to, to review. And there were. they're hoping, I believe, what, they, they meet on Tuesdays, correct? The board does. I think they're hoping then on, by July 16th to get support. They would like support from the city for their plans. I think they'll be sharing more information. But, I just wanted to make sure that you had a copy of, of what we talked about at the meeting. And there are some questions on it that they provided answers to. And I'm sure we'll hear some more information and, and encouragement to attend their meeting on the 16th so they could get this project started. And that's, I guess, about all I had.
Okay. I'll make it short and sweet. First, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. July 4th is coming up. But, on that point, I also want to reiterate out there that you can only shoot fireworks on July 3rd and July 4th from 1:00 until 11:00 at night. The police will be out and in force. I suggest you be very careful. You have to be ATD even taking anything off. This is a celebration and I want everyone to have a good time. But, I also want everyone to be safe. And with that said, we also have Saturday in the Park coming on Saturday. So, same thing. Hope everybody has a good time. And I hope we have good weather. And, and I have to thank Dave Bernstein for all that he does for, for the city every year because he does spend a lot of time and a lot of work on this. And it's, and it's a big deal for Sioux City. I think it's been over 25 years. So, thank you, Dave. And that's what I got.
Big parade?
Oh, the big parade. I thought that's your deal.
Yeah, you're the parade.
Yeah, you're the parade, boy. Jump on in there.
Before we do that, hey, Ted? Earlier, the council did a, made a first reading on the sewer rate. And it went 3% for residential and commercial, 10% for all other classifications. And we're going to get the cost of service study out to all of the sister cities to review in the next 60 days. And then, we'll have some, are we going to have some meetings on that?
That's for a year of that 10%, so you know.
Can I address, I'm sorry?
Starting, starting August, yeah, starting August 1. But, we're going to have meetings on that, aren't we, with the?
Right.
The cost of service.
Yes.
Just quickly, I did want to say thank you for taking those concerns into consideration over the week. And we certainly appreciate the, the time that we will then have to do our cost analysis, analysis and rate analysis. So, we do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then, I just want to agree 110% with Council Member Capron about the fireworks ordinance. I would appeal to all of our citizens to please, please abide by the ordinance. Our police officers can only do so much. And I know it gets a lot of frustration on the citizens' part when they make a call into the police department. By the time the police arrive, the people are gone that have been shooting off the fireworks. That, in addition to Rhonda talked about safety in the community, I also want to use our police officers for their different levels of calls that they need to make. And I want to make sure that we have our enforcement people available for the, don't take this wrong, but for the more important calls where we really need their assistance. So, I'm going to just make a public plea to our citizens to please abide by the fireworks ordinance, the 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM on July 3rd, 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM on July 4th. And hopefully, we won't have as many calls as we've had in the past. It's, it's got to really be a on-your-honor type system in so many ways. And it is a celebration of the 4th of July. It's a celebration of many things. So, I want everyone to enjoy the 4th of July, but let's be safe and let's be mindful of our neighbors and be respectful of the ordinance that the city council had passed in last year. That's all I have, mayor.
When is the roadway painting contract up? Because these guys are unbelievable. You put no signs up. They, they do Hamilton Boulevard. People got to merge in. They're backed up six, seven blocks. And we're supposed to accept that. I'm sorry, Dave, but they, they're, they are a bad contractor and we wrote a bad spec.
Yeah, I don't know when the contract.
Well, nobody allows you to shut Hamilton Boulevard down with no signage, come up on West 19. People are almost hitting each other trying to get switched over. It's a bad contract. You know, any other city, they do that at night. And they put signs up like painting ahead with, you know, they got a truck that is back there with arrows pointing to get over.
And we discussed it with them last year about the issues on Hamilton. The only part I know that we tried to do at night is downtown, is the only part I know we tried to do at night. The problem with doing it at night is it usually doesn't dry as well as it does when we do it during the day. But, we can, we can.
Well, that we, if we write this spec again, or even if we renew their contract, if we are so foolish that we don't have, them have a back truck behind with arrows, then shame on us.
Yeah.
Because we're just asking our citizens to get in an accident.
Yeah, they should be definitely having the proper.
Well, there's not one thing out there today. I, I came down this morning at 8:30, about got clipped by a guy because he get, pulls up there, sees it and just doesn't even look, just pulls over into my lane. And I don't blame him. He.
No advance warning?
None.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it.
Number two, you got a bridge deck on 10th Street. Is that up for being fixed? Over the Floyd, it's unbelievable. It's got big holes in it.
Well, the guys check it out.
East of, east of standard ready mix. Over the Floyd.
Oh, 11th.
11th Street, okay. I'm bad.
11th.
If it isn't, I know you guys laughed at me when, when I proposed you put asphalt on the one up on Hamilton Boulevard, but it saved that bridge for two years. You should seriously look at a one-inch overlay on that bridge, guys.
Well, yep. Well, we'll take a look at it.
Because it's in bad, bad shape. And we're going to, it's worse than Floyd than the one you are fixing over the Big Sioux River. I can tell you that right now. Okay? And then, the street buckled today at 28th and Hamilton, or yesterday?
It'll be fixed tomorrow.
Yeah, I want to make sure. Because I want, it buckled pretty good.
Yeah, because they have, the hardest part about that's the traffic.
I know, I know. At least you got an arrow out there. You're better than your painters.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
How many times are we going to?
Jessica would have it. That would be P.
Gretkin. Oh, and no S.
No, no.
Okay, that's what I'm doing wrong.
You could at least have the arrows.